The United States of America and whose republic or which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bucina. Counsel, I need to, out of number three, discussion and allocation of hotel occupancy tax. I need to comment, first of all, and I ask your indulgence, but I'm also interested in your reasoning. I need to stop assuming from my previous days as mayor how we did this. We had a, what I would call a preparatory informational meeting first to consider all the applications, and then we had time to follow up if we needed to. Also, there were times that applicants needed to provide additional information that may not have been in the application or just more information than I personally wanted to help make the decision. However, I'm told that in the past few years since I've been out of office, that this has all been handled in one meeting. The opening of the applications, talking to the people who represent the organizations who've made the applications, and that by the end of our time this evening, that we vote to allocate these funds as we wish. Would you give me some feedback as to your? I would prefer that we not allocate tonight, but I understand that's the way it's been done, and we are already at the end of May. And I would presume that we could have a special meeting to allocate within a week or so. I know it's a busy time and we're getting crunched, but this is an important thing. What's your pleasure? What do you think?
Mr. Rare, the first thought I have is I know that there will be a number of questions I'm sure that all of us will have, which will require some follow-up. I also know that there are guidelines that Shelley has. The amount of requests that are being asked are almost twice, two X, of what we have to allocate, and we are governed to make sure that we only, we don't exceed certain dollar amounts for historic preservation or for the arts and so forth. So I think, I think the right thing to do is maybe take just a little bit of time, understand, ask for some follow-up, and put that budget back together is my thought.
I'm happy to delay decisions, but I would love it if we could have it at our next council meeting, be able to decide then instead of having another special meeting.
Okay, so that would be our next regular meeting, June 5th?
6th.
6th. Tony, what's your thought?
I don't know. I think we should, we should be able to solve most of it tonight. We may be able, that follow-up meeting just makes some minor changes or adjustments. But I would say, let's do it.
Would, let's do what?
Let's go ahead and do as much tonight as we possibly can.
Okay. Am I hearing you correctly that you're, you're okay with if, if we're all in agreement on a particular application for full funding or, or portion of funding to go ahead and vote it tonight?
Yes.
Any comment from the city attorney?
Mayor, I think that's a good way to go, but remember there are a couple of other requirements in the statute. If you decide to vote project by project, we have a maximum of 50% of the total funds that are expended in this year can be for historic preservation, and only a maximum of 15% for art projects. So you start approving some in advance, some of them may reach one of those numbers before you consider others.
Well, all the more reason that I'd prefer that we get a total download of information tonight and then put the full decision at our next council meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Would you agree to that? Okay. Thank you, counsel. One further question before we get into it. Is it against the statute, is it a provision in the statute, Mick, to award a for-profit business hot money?
No, sir.
Okay. That has been a practice in my experience. Has, have any of you had, has any of you had a different experience? The city council practice has been, all the time I've been, has been to support nonprofit organizations in town and not for-profit. Do you have a feeling if we have one for-profit application tonight, and if you make the decision to keep it with nonprofits, then we can move on that one right away? Your preference?
You mean to dismiss them from?
Yeah. I mean, if, if we know that we're not going to do a for-profit business and we cut the representative loose, I'm not inclined to do a for-profit business.
I'm agreeing.
Okay. Who, is Mr. Riley here? All right. You understand that?
I'm getting out early.
You're getting out early? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I do want to back to my business, because you're not looking like I said this year. And I love this city, we bring it down, this is my first time down.
Okay.
I understand next year, if I'm gonna make any money, they'll come here.
Well, it's, it is our practice to, to designate our hot money distributions to nonprofits. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for understanding and thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting me go, please.
And we'll, we'll keep your calendar date on our account. I mean, your concert date.
Thank you guys.
Uh-huh. Without objection then, counsel, would you like to just take these in order as presented? Okay, just a second. Is that okay? Okay, go ahead, Shelley.
So those who don't know me, I'm Shelley Goodwin, the city secretary. And so I just, the agenda tonight is to review the two-step hotel occupancy tax guidelines and review each hot funding application and review the city's available funding. And then, of course, we decided where to award funding later. And then the next step. I wanted to let you know that all the applicants are present tonight if you have any questions for them. So just to review the two-step, and Mick might have to help me with that. The, there are literally a two-step. You have to put heads in bed is the first part. And then the second part are nine categories. And those categories are convention and visitor center, convention registration, advertise the city, promoting the arts, historic resurrection.
Resurrection? Correct. I want to support that.
Resurrection and preservation. Sporting events in the county, under 1 million population. And then enhancing or updating existing sports facilities, so on. Tourist transportation city systems and signage direct in public to the sun. That's even though you might put heads in beds, it might not be eligible to receive hot funds because it doesn't meet one of the nine categories. So in addition, Mick just spoke about the, about the 15% of the total hot expenditure for the art. You can go over 15%, and you can go over 50% of the total allocations for hot expenditures for historic preservation.
I've never heard that, Mick. Is that new or did I just miss it? Oh, the latter?
1989, so I think it's, I think you missed it.
Straight to the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so first up, we have Admiral Nimitz Foundation. Anyone here?
Who's here, who's here representing the Admiral Nimitz Foundation?
I can step forward because?
Are you an employee?
I will be as of June 19th.
Oh, okay. Do you know about this application?
I do not know about it, but I'd be glad to take any information and refer back to the council.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But I did not come here today in the auspices of.
Yeah, okay, Steve, thank you. Okay, this is the first, two requests by the National Museum of the Pacific War. The second one that is coming up next is the more typical one I'm used to seeing, which is a large number to support the activities and the educational activities and historic activities of the museum along the lines of what has been requested before. And this one is for a renovation project on the, what's it called?
Command post.
Thank you, command post, yeah, windows. Questions, counsel? This is Marked in historical restoration and preservation projects.
Yeah, quick question. Clearly, I'm a huge supporter, first of all, foremost. That's one of the most important museums I can imagine. I do ask the question about the command post, understanding that it's, it's a retail outlet. Is that considered a historic building? I don't know the answer to that question, so I'm just asking, is it considered historic?
Mr. Brody, all I can do is take that question, refer back to either the general or Mr. Shields, and I can notify, if, if the council's not making a decision on funding today, I can obviously take any questions you may have. I'll, I'll email them tonight to the powers that be at the Nimitz and have an answer for you tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
So I, your question is, is the command post a historic site?
Right, or a historic building, yeah.
I just want to reiterate that I did not come here today with the understanding I would be representing the Nimitz, but, but, or else I would have been prepared. So.
Any other questions, counsel? In this one? Okay, Shelley?
Next up is Admiral Nimitz Foundation, and they are requesting $140,000.
Yeah, this is the same request as last year?
Yes.
One thing I'd love to know is what the overall marketing budget is. This is mostly going towards advertising, I believe.
I'm sorry, it's mostly, what kind of advertising?
Most of the ask is for advertising. Just curious what percentage of the overall budget, advertising budget this is? It's a little hard to understand from the report, which, thank you for having a report over the past year, but I, I see the ledger, it's just hard to know what it's for.
Again, may I email you like tonight or tomorrow? My name is Steve Riley.
I see, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And I'm here for the Fredericksburg Theater Company where I work now, but again, as I said, everybody knows now, I will be at the Nimitz. The word is now, okay, so.
All right. So, council lady personally would like some detail on the transaction.
You'd like to know the percentage of the full annual budget, how much it adds marketing? Does that make, okay, got it, thank you.
I'm assuming that's a Gary Nependorf question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, so those two will receive further information from the applicant. Thank you, Steve.
So next up is the Boys and Girls Club of Fredericksburg, and they are requesting $3,000 for advertising promotion program.
Okay, who's, who's here to represent that?
Dixie.
Dixie.
So we, first of all, thank you for letting us apply again, and we appreciate your support in the past. We were not able to apply last year. We have a new executive director and it kind of slipped through the cracks. We host a couple of fundraisers every year, and recently our Mahjong tournament, which happens in February, over half of the people come from out of town, and Shelley requested more information, so I have this printed out for y'all. It's a list of all the people that come to play. And lo and behold, 137 out of 163 players were from out of town this year. And we did not do a formal survey of who spent the night, but during the tournament, I do a lot of talking and I asked for a raise of hands, and the whole, like, competitive side of the room raised their hand. And I know that they stay in town, and I know they shop, and I know they eat because these women call me for months prior trying to plan their trip. So, anyway, that's our, the money that we received for that, we are able to promote it, to grow it back to the number of 200 participants that we had prior to our pandemic.
There was no application in '21, is that correct as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So two years.
And I understand why there wouldn't be one in '20, because that was the hot year.
But, right.
Pandemic.
We had the tournament, though.
But did you have it in '21 and '22?
Yes, sir.
With the event?
We did.
I just want to be clear because, and I hate to be the person to do this, because I'm not the rule follower typically, but it's not, if they come and shop and eat.
Oh, right, they spend the night, yes. So they do, I mean, our tournament starts at 8:00 a.m.
Yeah.
And we have people from Galveston to Oklahoma to, even the people from Horseshoe Bay come and spend the night. The ladies from San Antonio, there's a group of 12 of them, they come spend the night, and. And we have people from Galveston to Oklahoma to, even the people from Horseshoe Bay come and spend the night. The ladies from San Antonio, there's a group of 12 of them, they come spend the night and, um.
And this is your fundraiser?
Yes, sir.
Is it one of many?
It's one of our fundraisers. We also have a golf tournament in October. Um, we, we typically have maybe only five or six percent of those players come from out of town.
You also solicit the local merchants, because I know I get solicitation. So you do fundraisers from asking for donations throughout the year?
Yes, sir. We have a face-to-face, um, Great Futures campaign where we do have individual face-to-face.
Dixie, I know since you didn't, haven't done it in a few years, um, there's not an after-event report here. But can you characterize for me what you, what this brings you? You're, you're asking for $3,000. What do you expect to get from the fundraiser? What, how, how much?
Oh, the amount of money that we raise?
How much do you count on it to raise?
We raise around $15,000.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm. Brenda Newman Nichols started this tournament, uh, 10 years ago and she used to, um, pass it on to different nonprofits. And she got really tired of running it, so she came to us and said, "I'll give you this tournament if you'll take it over." So to be quite honest, I don't know how to play Mahjong. I'm not even sure if it has two G's at the end or not. And, but I can run, I can run the tournament and make the people happy and have them come to town. And they also participate in other things, you know, or if we have a silent auction or something, they'll help us with that, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this application?
Where do y'all advertise? Is this, how far-reaching do y'all use, print, radio, internet, video?
We actually mail these ladies like mail. So we do mail, um, a card to our previous players. And then we, we, uh, coordinate with other, Mahjong is a really big thing, like, people travel to play it. So we coordinate with those other groups and get their list of people, too, and, um, kind of cross-pollinate those. And, um, it seems to work. And we've done some newspaper advertising as well because locally, of course, people read the newspaper.
Well, just a comment, thank you for tracking your number of participants, who's coming in, where are they coming in from?
Yes.
Having read through a lot of these today, I don't always see that same kind of metric being measured, so thank you for doing that. If you, if you can expand and actually measure staying and not staying, I think it helps support the argument for the request.
And we, we can do that. Um, when Melinda Watson was our executive director, she kind of had it down to a science. And, um, I think when Melinda took over, it just might not have been communicated that we needed to do a follow-up survey, or perhaps when they are registering electronically, ask the question, "Do you plan to spend the night or not?" So we can certainly follow up with that.
Anything else? Mayor, I have a question. When I reviewed the application, I saw your information about estimated number of folks from out of town coming to spend the night and so forth. But I was trying to find the category in step two that we talked about a moment ago. What category for the hot tax would just come under it? I didn't see it addressed in your application.
It is, let me see, she checked.
Do I have something you don't? Is on page three, I have historical restoration preservation advertising to encourage tourists to visit historic sites?
No, it's. Advertising and promotional programs to attract her.
Okay.
I don't, and again, Melinda might have been confused as to what she should have checked there.
Okay.
So my answer is, that's what I have.
Yeah.
The reason I ask that is then, all of this, anything you're allocated would have to be spent solely for advertising and solicitation of people to come here, not for any other purpose.
Correct.
So that 3,000 out of your total budget would go only for that and that could be in your report if you receive.
Yes, sir. And any, I, I believe, in the past, when we received, I mean, we're just asking for 3,000. If we get 500, we're happy with that, too. We just feel like, um, our, our mission for the Boys and Girls Club is to, um, produce great young people and support them to be productive, caring citizens. And when we're raising money and bringing people to town to put value back into our young people that are going to grow up and take care of us one day, that's, I mean, that's just kind of where that comes from. And I, yes, we can, and our, our, um, accounting department is very specific.
Okay.
And they certainly will have a lineup for that.
The reason I ask that, Mayor, is chess tournaments have been held not to be eligible for hot money. And so, um, if it's not a true sporting activity, uh, but it's just a tournament of some kind, we'd have to make sure that the funds were spent only for advertising for Fredericksburg.
Advertising for what?
Fredericksburg tourism.
Okay. Um, I was looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, that's fine.
I didn't figure you'd miss something I caught. Okay. Any other questions for Dixie? Thank you.
Uh-huh, and I do have these. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Cherry Mountain Community Club. And they are requesting 2,300,000.
Good afternoon, I'm Joanna Bernetti Trophy and I'm from the Cherry Mountain Community Club. And I have with me today Donnie Shu, Ray Roushi and Mary Lynn Roushi. We're all members of the Cherry Mountain Community Club. We're a nonprofit organization that owns two historic schoolhouses. One is from 1883 and one is from 1926. And we're out north of town. You take 87, you turn on Cherry Mountain Loop and we're on, uh, the, probably about the middle of Cherry Mountain Loop, past Gibson Mine Road. And we're here today asking you for $2,390 for our newer schoolhouse, the 1926 schoolhouse. We want to repair the windows and repaint the windows. And so there's preservation of the windows, so we don't have rodents, we don't have deterioration of that particular schoolhouse. And that schoolhouse is made of stone, where our older schoolhouse was log and mortar and also added on to. And so we're asking for those funds. We, uh, opened the schoolhouse, the newer schoolhouse only, to weddings, graduation parties, um, other activities. And also this year, we had two weddings where people came from out of town and one came actually from Australia. The bride was from the Cherry Mountain Schoolhouse area, but the groom was from Australia. So we had not only out-of-state people visiting, but we had out-of-country people visiting. And so we anticipate from, uh, two of the weddings that we know were definitely out of, out-of-town guests, over 400 different, uh, out-of-town people that would have been staying here in Fredericksburg because, as you realize, we're a rural, uh, schoolhouse area. So we don't have bed and breakfast facilities out there and definitely not hotel, motels that would be able to accommodate any number of the people. Also, we're very fortunate if some of you are bicycle enthusiasts, we're on the road where we're nationally known as the Bicycle Route. And so we see people that come from all different areas. And I've actually talked to people, they fly in from Chicago and they rent these certain kind of bikes just so they can bike our area.
So primarily the schools are a wedding venue?
No, sir, they're, they're, they're used for our community, but you can rent them out. And also, we, uh, open our schools along with the Country Schools Association for Historic Preservation. Believe it or not, we actually have report cards from the students. And we have some of our members that actually attended the school. And so they talk about historic preservation and we have books there, too.
Shelley, I'm missing pages two and four for y'all.
I don't think section B was included.
So while she's passing it out real quick, who, who actually owns the property?
Because of the way the deed was done in the 1800s by Mr. Durst, who donated the property to actually have a schoolhouse there. We are, a school, but we're not members of the Cherry, uh, Cherry Mountain Community Club owns the school. So when the school became part of the consolidation with the Fredericksburg Independent School District, then we, as a nonprofit organization, took over to preserve those two historic schools. But it was never owned by the county because of the way the deed was. But we do cooperate and have open houses with the country schools, we're on their tours.
So they're not like the rest of them where, I guess Dr. Lindley is involved in those quite. They're owned by the Gillespie County or the school system.
They are owned by the Cherry Mountain Community Club, which is a nonprofit organization.
Which is separate than the other schools out there.
Yes, sir. But we are, uh, fortunate enough that the country schools always advertise with us. When we have an open house, we always advertise for them. And there's been a lot of cooperation back and forth between the members of the Cherry Mountain Schoolhouse. We're all volunteers, nobody's paid. It's, uh, people that from, that live in that particular area of Gillespie County that want to preserve educational values that our forefathers had. And they thought education was so important, that's why they had the little schools, both of them.
Do you have a total cost projection for the actual project?
For the actual project itself is, uh, $13,290.
You're just asking for part of that?
Yes, sir, we're only asking for $2,390. And many of you know that less than two weeks ago, we had our annual Cherry Mountain, uh, Community Club barbecue and auction. And that is how we raise funds to do other historic preservation.
And the county awarded them $10,000.
That's correct. The county awarded us $10,000.
Was it on this project?
Yes, there it was.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
We certainly appreciate your attention, thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you. Donnie, how's it feel to be on that side of it?
Really great.
You were always very good at that. Go ahead, Shelley.
Yeah, the next one up is the Christian Methodist William Church. And there's a, you're asking for 110,000 for construction and 27,000 for landscaping.
So I had, I had a question on that, I was doing a little research and, uh, if I can go ahead.
Sorry?
Yeah, so I was going, reading a little bit about your, um, project. I remember a few years ago, and I'm going back to 2017, uh, I think the city helped about 100K. Is that, is that, is my memory correct there?
No, we received 26,000.
26,000, okay, so maybe the question was 100K. And you have a, uh, wedding chapel that's operational, is that right?
Right, we, uh, completed the restoration of the church itself with the railing and all the sidewalks and the ADA combined sidewalks. Uh, we also constructed men's and women's restrooms in the back. And the wedding venue does, it, it pays the bills. I'd like to say, though, with this request, the request wasn't really for 110,000 or 27,000. These are just the projected costs that would, that we would need to get either of these projects done. The county has awarded us 45,000 already. So, and, and that goes towards the construction of the replica of the colored schoolhouse, which is, uh, what we're attempting to do. The original schoolhouse is on Schubert Street, at 105 East Schubert. And we tried for a time to get that schoolhouse. Unfortunately, the gentleman who owns it is unwilling to part with it. And we, uh, actually contacted some foundations to see if maybe they would assist us, maybe we could give him an offer that he would accept. The problem with the foundations is, is the original schoolhouse has been altered from the way it looked originally. So because it doesn't look like it did when it was originally built, we weren't able to get any foundational help. Uh, so what we have come up with was to build a replica of the original colored schoolhouse. And we have pictures of family members in that, around, around the original schoolhouse. What would happen when this occurred? Well, let me start from the beginning, okay, because it's a lot easier for me that way. Our wedding venue, uh, has been in place for about a year, maybe a year and a half. We've had 14 weddings, only two of which were local. Okay, and so the rest of these people come from out of town for our venue, which obviously puts heads in the beds. We're currently able to hold about 50 people in the chapel comfortably. And that's where our weddings are confined to. Once we finish the landscaping, we'll be able to offer the back portion of the church, the yard, which is almost an acre. So that will expand our occupancy by three times. We'll go from 50 people to 150 people who will come to Fredericksburg specifically for our wedding venue. Last year, we had over 700 people just walk into the chapel. And we know this because they signed our book. I'm sure more came in that didn't sign the book. The construction project for the, for the landscaping is really kind of secondary because until we get the replica of the schoolhouse built, we can't really do any landscaping in the back. We have landscaped from three-quarters, half to three-quarters of the property. But if, until we get the schoolhouse put in, we can't landscape because we'll have to transfer electricity and transfer plumbing and like that. We would just tear up the work and we'd, uh. So what we were looking for was help with any portion, uh, of this project that we could get. The schoolhouse is approximately 300 square feet, it's not very big. And we have, uh, the contractors that I've talked to say it'll take about five to six weeks to complete it. I know there's a time constraint, at least on the county hot funds, we have to get it done within a year. So we have 45,000 allocated from the county. We're willing to put another 20,000 with it, okay, that we have just, you know, put back. Still leaves us short, so here I am. The 110,000, I, I like to say, too, I, 110,000 we asked for, that was before anybody had committed anything to this project. So that's why that, uh, seems kind of high.
Do you have preliminary construction plans or, or somebody giving you a?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, we've, I've taken a lot of our lead from Mr. Richard Loughlin, who is on the, uh, Historical Review Board. And he's also familiar with, with constructing small structures. He won't be doing the work, you know, he's, he's a extremely busy man, hard to catch up with. Well, we know Richard, oh, okay. But he's the one that gave us the approximate cost of around 110,000. And he has helped us with, he came out to the original schoolhouse, uh, and took the measurements. In fact, I, he showed me something I didn't know. Originally, the, the schoolhouse now, as it stands, has two windows on one side and two windows on the other side. They're the very tall windows in the old-fashioned shape. He said, "But according to these pictures of the original, that's not the way it was." And sure enough, we went out, he checked it, he found the scabs. All four windows were on one side in the original, which is one of the reasons why the, the foundations wouldn't assist us because they said the building had been altered to an extent that, uh, they weren't interested, so.
So you, the 110 is, is Mr. Loughlin's?
Yes, that, that was his, uh.
Yeah, projected.
Projected, whatever you call it.
Okay, and so the county has awarded you 45,000 toward that 110?
Yes, they have.
And do you have, um, once it's built and it's up, uh, what are your resources to manage it, to show it, to host visitors and that sort of thing? Is it going to be guided or is it going to be self-tour or, how do you, how do you envision?
We have, well, since it is a replica, we have no problem with turning it into, basically, an information center. We have documents from our families that go way back. We have furniture, we have old, uh, original school desk with square nails, that was kind of fascinating, that we, that we will put in there, portraits and like that. But I've noticed in some of the other visitation centers, including, uh, the, I can never remember the German name of the church down here. But we have, uh.
We call it the VK, so. We call it the VK, so it's around.
Yeah, okay.
Ryan's here.
Ryan, yeah, yeah. But they hand out brochures for all the other businesses and like that. I notice that goes on a lot here at Fredericksburg. So that's kind of the plan, to display old furniture, portraits. We have a couple of portraits that were done by some local artists of the church that we'll be putting on display. And actually, I'm, my wife likes to call me the tour guide because every time people come in, I'll go up and I'll say, yeah, that's my grandparents on the statue. And it turns into a thirty minute tour of just, you know, what the church is now. So, yeah, it, it would be basically to take tourists through and.
Okay. Well, I have enjoyed the video that you made that's made the YouTube rounds for quite a few years now about the, the restoration project of the church. And just driving by there the other day and noticed how, how really nice it looks. So congratulations on, on that project. Well done. Any other questions, Constance?
Just a quick question. A number of the other museums in town also do some sort of community outreach, family-based programs, children programs, those types of things. I'm not familiar if you have that or are you considering offering something for the community and for families and for kids?
Actually, we have, we have talked about, and this is in the preliminary, very preliminary stage, but we're really interested in doing something with autism awareness. We've actually had a fundraiser for an autistic, a family with an autistic child that we knew and we were able, they needed a car. So what we did was we got some locals up there, not locals, San Antonio locals, that's where I'm from. And so we all, they came up here and we got some work done around the church and did some other things. And the pay that they would normally have gotten for doing some of the landscaping work, they all donated it and they helped this family buy a car so that they could get their autistic son transportation back, go through his school. He had a special needs school, I think. So, and that's where we really want to go. But like I said, that's in the very preliminary stages.
What, what do you mean by certain transportation systems serving tourists and hotel guests on your application? That was a funding category. Certain transportation systems serving tourists and hotel guests.
Well, actually, the restrooms that we built that are period dated, they were donated with the building. It was an old, old home was donated to us by Joe and Becky Howard, who run the Fredericksburg Trolley. And they come through, if they ever see the door open, they come through, they'll stop and they'll just bring the tourists through and we'll give them a tour. They've worked very closely with us since we've started this project.
So you're referring to public restrooms in that slot, is that what it's here?
Right. We have public restrooms now that were built to look period dated because of the, that building they gave us to relocate.
Yeah, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you. After tomorrow, you're retired. You can do that, right?
Thank y'all for your work on this. This is really important to our community.
What, what he said?
Yeah, what he said. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Next up is guy Counselor Vaughn Fredericksburg. And they are requesting forty five.
Are you Stacy?
I'm Louise, I repeat.
Oh, huh.
Yes, I'm representing the club today, so.
All right, so advertising, promoting the arts, historical restoration, preservation projects, and signage directing the public to sites and attractions. And do I maybe think some of the applicants may have this incorrect? Signage, or maybe I do, signage directing the public to sites and attractions frequently visited by tourists was a big wayfinding sign in a citywide thing, right?
Yes, sir, directional or, or show the way.
Okay. It's not.
Hands or facility.
It's not putting a sign out pointing to your place or an activity to your.
No, it's ma, it's main for general public direction.
Yes. Well, that's okay. I would have gotten that wrong too. I just want to make sure, because we did this large wayfinding thing several years ago.
Probably thinking of our banners that we.
Mucho expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Louise? Let me see here. You're requesting money for advertising.
How, what is your whole budget for advertise? I'm sorry, this is advertising, but it's also like operation and maintenance. It's like website fees and utilities. No, this is, the funds that we're asking for have always been and are still requested simply to help us with our show, the annual fine art show that we've had for, this will be our thirtieth year.
In November.
And it, we do, it pays for advertising and also helps us with the rental fee at St. Joseph's Hall. So those are the two things that, that we use it for.
Okay, and why was there a refund to the city?
Because we didn't, last year there was a mistake made by the newspaper and they didn't charge us to advertise for our show last year. So we didn't have to use those funds. So that was what the refund was about. And am I? Okay, no, sorry, go ahead.
So St. Joseph's Hall is where you have this?
Yes.
And they charge you twenty three hundred and seventy five dollars for rent?
Yes.
And that's for how long?
That's for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
What's the, Louise, do you know the total amount you spend on the event?
We budget and usually spend about seventy eight hundred dollars a year. Seven, seven thousand, eight hundred.
Seventy eight hundred?
Yes, to put the show on.
Do you all remember what the rent is that we charge the group? But that's, that's our building, I mean.
Yeah, we don't have a building being, right.
Okay.
Just, just an observation, that rent seems high. Maybe I'm wrong there, but.
Well, actually, I think they give us a deal.
Which, which direction?
Well, since they have renovated the building, all of their rent has gone up. Thursday, we, we are able to use it or move in and get our setup done. And we don't, we aren't charged anything for that, so. The largest fee is for Saturday.
I think what you're doing is so important to our community. I just.
It is.
Want to make sure that we have rents then, again, they should give you a deal or better deal if possible. That's just me speaking, so.
Well, I think that we are getting a pretty good deal, so. You know, we're, we're great, we're thankful to have that space. It's a beautiful space. And if you've never come to our show, I encourage you to because it's, gets better and better every year. These are all local artists and it's a great opportunity for them not just to sell their work, but to just display it for the public to see, so. And it's a great three-day event. We have a Friday night reception, which is always a fun social event as well as viewing the artwork that our artists have put their heart and soul into, so.
Am I missing anything here? I appreciate the large print.
Oh.
Do you have a, is there an entry fee on the show?
No, you have to be a member of our club. And if, if there's, if there's a sale of their artwork, that they, there's twenty percent commission.
Okay, you get a commission?
Mm-hmm.
And there's no fee at the door?
No.
Okay.
No fee.
Okay.
Just come and enjoy.
Any other questions? Thank you, Louise.
Okay, thank you and thank you for your support over the years.
And next one is the Texas Ranger, the former Texas Ranger Foundation. This one is for the project Celebrate Texas with Tim South.
Good evening, Councilman, Eric.
Evening.
Good to see y'all out here.
So, Joe, the Celebrate Texas 2024 event is your request. And I'm, this is for general expenses to put this on. I see you do some marketing, et cetera. Is it all for, considered for marketing?
Yeah, all for advertising.
Okay, that's what you've marked here. All right, so is this the event you had to cancel? Last year or this year?
Yeah, we did. We had, this year we, we had an event. The event canceled. Is that what you're referring to?
You were awarded ten thousand dollars, but you had to cancel the event.
Yeah, the, we had about forty thousand dollars worth of damage to our facility that night. We were playing a dinner play and had been set up in the Blue Northern Blue Inn, tore up our screens, blew our tables everywhere, so we had to cancel the event. And we're, we scheduled that event for this coming August, along with our Texas Ranger Day. We've been advertising it on our website and fixing to advertise it again through the news media.
So you, you were awarded the ten thousand last year for advertising the same request for the same event?
That's correct.
And you had already spent that by the time you had to cancel, so there was a refund on your part. Did you have, you had a room, a certain, some room block at Hoffman House? It says here on your application for that. Were you liable for some expenses there? Or not fulfilling the block, the hotel block, or did you use them anyway, or?
We had a hotel block, yeah. We had a dinner play scheduled that night. Yeah, and we went ahead and got, a lot of people came into town for it. We had hotel rooms blocked.
I see.
So we were, we did make arrangements for the dinner play to be shown to some of the.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't remember the weather event. I'm sure it was, was it a big storm?
It's one of that little cold front, little dam.
Cold front, okay, okay. Did you have rooms blocked or just the rental facility for dinner?
No, we had rooms blocked for that weekend.
Joe, can you help me understand? So I'm looking at the Celebrate Texas request is for March ninth, 2024 for ten thousand dollars. And then the Texas Ranger Day request will be, that is for fifteen thousand and that's on August twelfth, 2023?
That's correct.
There's a part in your letter that says, "Hot Funds Requested to Support This Event, the Texas Ranger Day, Total fifteen thousand. We will also incorporate all activities and tasks previously scheduled but canceled for the Celebrate Texas 2023 event on March eighteenth, 2023." So is it just going to be the same thing for the Texas Ranger Day in August as it will be for the next Celebrate Texas event?
Yeah, we're moving the event that was scheduled in March to August to, to, and also have Texas Ranger Day. This is the two hundredth anniversary of the Texas Rangers this year. And so we've been having a lot of events throughout the state and all these events are set aside for the, recognized the two hundredth anniversary. And since that one was canceled and we had a lot of people coming from various locations through the state because we had a play the night before, I worked with the, the man from Arizona. He's agreed to come back and do the play again. So we moved all that up to our August twelfth, Texas Ranger Day. So we then have that event plus Texas Ranger Day all on that weekend.
And how has your capital campaign been going with Colonel West? Has he been helpful? Allen West? Isn't he the capital campaign?
What about the capital campaign?
How has that been going?
Oh, well, we're steadily working at it. I mean, we've got people right now out raising funds and we're hoping to hear something pretty quick on possibly a good donation. We're anxious to build it. It's probably more than most of you hear. It's been going on and we're steady, got it out. We've got a good capital campaign manager now that's working daily on this. We've applied for different grants and so forth, so everything's going well. We've, like everybody else, it's hit with the inflation, COVID and everything did hurt us. We were scheduled to actually start this facility in 2020 and some things happened that stopped it. It was our fault. And it delayed it and it delayed it and then we fell into this inflation period. So like everybody else, we're looking for funds to get, get this thing finished.
Joe, did you make application to the county for this? Did you make an application to the county for hot funds for this?
No, I did not.
You did not?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Ms. Kirchner brought up number nine. Hey, sorry. Any further, anything else on that one? Okay, let's go to number nine.
Fredericksburg Art Guild, and they're asking for six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Mr. Miller, are you here? Anybody from the Art Guild here? All right, we will. Can we move on from that?
Can I answer any questions?
Just to, I'm sorry, I got confused earlier. The Art Guild, we charge five hundred dollars a year for having their rental at our, our building on East Austin. And this request is for advertising, but also for operational purposes, just like that.
And what was the point of operating on fifty five?
Yes, we give them a pretty decent deal.
We get a discounted rent. All right, let's go to number ten.
Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce, they're asking for twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, Penny?
Good evening, all. Let me begin by just thanking you for your past support, not only in hot dollars, but we know a parade doesn't roll down the streets of Fredericksburg. Got lots of support from city staff and support from the police department and all, all of your departments are probably impacted in some way, so we're very thankful for that support. We are the largest free event, I believe, in Fredericksburg. We do charge bleacher seating for an elevated experience if you so choose, but you can see the parade free anywhere in downtown. This past year, twenty four thousand in-person attendees watched the parade. We know that sixty one percent of those came from outside of Gillespie County. And we submitted to a pretty extensive post-event report form with our methodologies detailed in. But that led to more than fourteen thousand, six hundred out-of-town guests. And with the math that we did and the data that we collected at the event, we know that we brought in more than two times occupancy tax receipts for this bucket of money that we spent in last year. So not only are we paying our own way, but hopefully we're generating margin for other requests as well. So not only are we paying our own way, but hopefully we're generating margin for other requests as well. We are, I think, a local favorite. We are live televised at CBS Austin, which gave us about another 17,000 views. Plus, we made the investment this past year to also livestream the event because we know that there are shut-ins that don't get to see but half the parade on TV. So in response to that, we invested in money for the livestream so that we could get it out to nursing homes, hospital, other facilities of guests that we know don't have the ability to travel in person to see the parade. Happy to answer any questions that you have above and beyond the materials that we've submitted.
Not that it has any effect on this, Penny. But we were talking the other day that the city also provides police a park. So there's more than $12,000 from the city that goes to this parade and others, not only.
Absolutely, and as I referred to, we know it wouldn't roll down the street without police, without the street department, without the health department. I mean, they, it's a, it's a considerable partnership that we're very honored to have.
Some people that were around here when that first parade, there were four entries. They went around market bus. That was it. Four entries.
And it's grown a bit. We hit 142, which we believe is our high water mark on entries.
It was an excellent. Was it livestreamed back then? It was. Penny, this is just my, my own knowledge. I'm just curious. Through the various participants here, are there sponsorships that they pay to help support the cost of putting this event on?
We do. We, we sell sponsors at, like similar other events, we do have sponsorship support. Some of that comes from our tier members within the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, HEB is our title sponsor and have been that for a number of years. And then we also have broadcast support. We don't, we don't get any of the broadcast money that helps us defer that partnership. But we do receive some sponsorship money that we retain as part of the operating costs of the event.
No, I, I see the, in your application submission, there is some, um, storage fees. In, in the aggregate of 640, I guess these three receipts equal that. So the $12,000 is, is, is a contribution to the expenses of the whole event. Am I correct about that? It's not just for advertising?
It's only for advertising. Your funds are only used for advertising expenditures and those are outlined in our post-event follow-up report along with the performance metrics of those. You probably are looking at, you have a full copy of our budget. We do store, like, so the Santa Claus float lives in storage all year long. Other parade hard goods live in storage, but those are, as, through our budget, they're allocated across service lines, but your funds are only used for advertising dollars.
Okay, no, I'm not looking at a budget. I'm looking at a quarterly tax report, hot report. And.
You ask us to report all event expenses on that report, so we do. But your, your funds are only used for the advertising portion of that.
So you see, it's under by, you know, 30 grand, even though we gave them $12,000. So it's, it's more, the event costs are more than the $12,000 that we give them.
Also, the expenses here that are related.
Yeah, we're asked to report all event expenditures in our quarterly reporting. And actually, we don't, I don't believe we are even trigger a quarterly report. We do it voluntarily. I think our allocation, if I remember right, is, requires an annual report, but we go ahead and report quarterly and for transparency.
Isn't that required? It was when I was doing.
Only those that are over $16,000.
Oh, okay.
Have to do a quarterly report, but I do have several who turn them in.
Okay. Thank you. That explains what I was looking at. I filled these out before and it looked oddly. I didn't do the whole event, just the hot stuff, that's why. All right, any other questions on this? Thank you, Penny.
Thank you very much.
Next is a Fredericksburg Education Initiative BBA Systems Guide for $10,000.
We asked for $5,000.
Yeah. It's not.
That's not $10,000.
It's five.
I don't even want $10,000. Okay.
We don't have a $5,000 explanation.
I can cheerlead and tell you about the event, but I'll just answer your questions.
We don't.
Any, anything specifically?
Thank you for the optimization on the post-event.
Yeah, we, we've been livestreaming it for years and getting an international audience. We have attendees this year from Abu Dhabi. We have a rocket program now in the United Arab Emirates. So we had people watching from there in Mexico. It's in four states, 75 schools. It's really unique. It's the only really educational type-based event here. And the hot fund request that I'm aware of, it's strictly educational. We launch rockets and it was discovered here. It started here. 1996 Brett Williams started. We've got a lot of local success stories. Josh Young worked for SpaceX, one of the original employees of that. We get funding from Jeff Bezos. Rebecca Sossman was featured in Good Night Oppie, which is a movie by Steven Spielberg, a documentary on the Mars rover. And she had considerable screen time. And these are all former Systems Go students, so it's really a feather in the cap of the area.
I, I love the whole concept and idea and having kids fall in love with engineering is just, you know, couldn't be more exciting from my perspective. One of the things that we discussed in preparing for this was, does that fit under the sporting event category? Because we have to adhere to.
It's not in sporting events. I put it under advertising and promotional programs to attract tourists. So I don't know how we got the numbers from. I turned this in in March. I have number three category and we requested $5,000, which we've requested the last couple of years. And all the, all the money goes for out-of-town advertising to bring people to Fredericksburg. And we document ticket sales. We ask, we have a survey. I give you numbers on how many room nights that we expand or that we fulfill Facebook impressions. We had four, over 40,000 last year. Over 3,400 livestream viewers around the world, so we have that all documented. So I'm not sure if you're looking at a different information than what I saw.
No, you, you're correct. I say advertising.
Phil, can you please make sure us locals know about it too? It's great that you're advertising elsewhere, but I don't have a kid that's in high school yet, so.
Well, and that's one, I know hot funds cannot be expended for local advertising. We can't, but we can't spend money for Fredericksburg Standard or the radio station. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's kind of been an ongoing.
It's the issuers from outside the community to attend the event.
But we do advertise locally out of our own budget. And we have Facebook and website and we do all the others as well. And we have a lot of locals at the end, definitely.
You designated $5,000 to target out-of-towners.
That's strictly, and I documented all, only out-of-town marketing.
By the way, I really appreciate your application. You just had everything laid out here so well, so thank you for doing that, too.
Former educator, can't help it. Thank you.
You're also a marketer. Thank you.
Next is Fredericksburg Farmer's Market for $6,000.
Anybody here representing Fredericksburg Farmer's Market? Nope. Too late. All right, $6,000 for.
Yes, several categories mark, encouragement promotion of the art, historic restoration and preservation and signage.
Yeah, I think the signage is a mistake, but unless you're talking about the banner.
A lot of them do mark, though, because that's.
Yeah, I was just trying to get clarity on that because I don't think, that can be easily understood. And the encouragement promotion of the arts, I'm assuming, we'll have to talk to him? I'm assuming is there live music that they have?
Thank you.
All right, but I noticed too that in their advertising expenses, they, the bulk of their newspaper ads are in the standard. Okay, let's go.
Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest, and they are requesting $10,000.
I didn't see you back there and I thought, where in the world is Debbie?
She was.
Good afternoon, Council. I am here to represent Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest. I'm lucky to say I've been a part of it for 33 years and we're celebrating our 33rd anniversary this year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. All of the $10,000 is used for out-of-town promotion and advertising.
Hi Debbie, I didn't see an annual report. Did we not receive one? Shelley?
I submitted one. I can resubmit it if need be.
No, it's not.
It's not in my package?
And that's not.
But you did receive it?
I did.
Okay.
I can resubmit it, Shelley, if needed.
I do think I received it after I made.
Okay.
So, because of the, the way it sailed this year.
Yeah, I submitted everything in March.
We'll get it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Vivian?
We do receive a lot of people coming from out of town. Our early ticket study this year so far is showing a lot of people coming from out of state and around Texas, so we do know we do put heads and beds for this festival.
I don't have the report, so I can't see. Can you tell me where you advertise, please?
Texas Highways. We're doing a promotion with Texas Co-op Power for all three of my festivals. I bought one package that they were able to split into three different times of the years to promote each one. So it's a statewide publication and they have a huge circulation. We're also doing a very nice online campaign with them as well. We do tourintexas.com, Texas Highways, San Antonio Express News, Houston Chronicle, Austin American Statesman, Austin Chronicle. Those are some that just come to mind quickly. I can submit a full advertising report as well.
Would you like?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm, big picture, I just wonder if we could have better buying power? Is that what it's called, like media buys? Instead of all, every, every entity, you know, having to go to every media outlet? If we could do something more collective instead of everyone having to go to the media outlet? I'd love that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Debbie.
We appreciate your past support. Thank you.
Next up is Fredericksburg Junior Chamber of Commerce, and they are requesting $25,000.
So was it successful this year?
Better than last year and not as good as the year before. But, but overall, a pretty good event. We didn't have any rain. That was good. But yeah, a pretty good event, so.
So your request, Sheri, from your financial report last year, would you anticipate that this would, would be about 25% of the cost of the event?
Uh, no, no, no. Our, our event is, is, is a lot more than that. What we, so we're a community service organization and part of our creed is service to humanity. That's what we do. And so we have actually started working with a graphic design class in a school to give them real-world experience working on projects. And they do all of our marketing, all of our, creating our posters. And in return, we do a contest for them and we also give a scholarship to them, to the student that does the best poster design, t-shirt design, whatever. So what, what we ask for from, from hot funds is advertising. We do internet radio, we do college town radio stations, social media, things like that.
I'm curious, what the, the printed materials? Last year, out of your 20,000, 15,000 of it was for printed materials?
Uh, yes, that's posters, the t-shirts and all of, all of that, the souvenir type stuff. The, the t-shirts that get printed, the koozies, that part of it.
And are those then sold at the event?
Yes.
So is that merchandise that's sold at the event?
Correct, and online.
Okay, would you be able to produce a, a more thorough budget for the event, especially advertising budget?
I can put one together, yes.
In, in tracking revenue, do you, I'm sure you must run a report on t-shirts, koozies and so forth, it's all gate proceeds.
Correct.
Can you break all that down? Is that typical of a reporter? I don't see that here.
Um, it's something I can put together for you, to be honest. I'm going on still very little sleep from the weekend, so I haven't put that all together yet. But yes, I can, I can get that for you.
Appreciate it.
Are you president, Sheri?
I am not. I'm just the one that gets nominated to come up here, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
Next up is the Fredericksburg Music Club, and they are requesting $1,000.
My name is Pam Willhite and I am privileged to be a part of the board of Fredericksburg Music Club. One change, we do want to include in our $5,000 the fact that most, that a lot of it will be used for advertising and marketing. I thought I made that clear, but maybe I didn't. I'll remind you that the music club was started in 1937 and we continue on today. In the early 90s, we became 501(c)(3) and started putting on a series of concerts. We present eight concerts a year. We do not sell tickets. We do have memberships. We do have, accept contributions at each one of our, our concerts. I think what we do is very helpful. I do think our banner makes a difference. We, as far as signage is concerned, because we have had people come and, and visiting, said, well, we found out about it because we saw your banner. So I do think that that is helpful. These have been people from out of town who have just spoken to the board.
Pam, yeah, last year you requested 2,000, 25, no, 2,000?
Yes, sir.
And received 1955 from the county as well. This year is quite a pop.
Yes, because I attended the HOT workshop that Shelley gave and learned that we could charge, that we can use HOT funds for the artist's fees. And of course, the fees are the majority of our budget. So that's why I made the request for $5,000 for both advertising, marketing and the fees.
Well, if there's an increase paying for the artists, which I certainly understand, have you considered ticket sales are another way to help generate some additional revenue to help offset that cost?
We're, we're not ready to do that yet. We really like having a, having concerts where the retired school teacher can come and not worry about it.
If you start doing that, there are not enough people bringing the air. That's one of another add to. Any, make any comment on the use of this for our artist's fees?
I believe that's permissible. Sorry, I believe that's permissible, okay? I would like to make a comment about banners, however. Until sometime in late 2010, some 2019. like to make a comment about banners, however. Until sometime in late 2010, 2009, or 2010, the legislature was faced with the issue of whether those type of banners for particular events constituted advertising or promotion, and so they changed the statute to say signage can only be justified in the way we mentioned earlier, Mayor, which are to give tourists and staying in hotels directions to facilities.
Well, conversations I've had with audience members, these are tourists staying in hotels.
I'm just saying, that's the difference now when you're considering banners. They are not part of your advertising budget. They have to be that type of directional sign.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Next up is Fredericksburg Rotary Club Foundation, and they're requesting $10,000.
Good evening. I'm Debbie, and I have the privilege to work with that festival as well. I do have a couple of Rotarians here in the audience, if you have questions for other members other than just me.
Is this new?
It's our second year.
Second? How'd it go?
We were very excited with the first year, very excited, and the second year shaping up to be stronger, which is awesome.
Yeah.
I don't have a report for this either, so if it was submitted, we.
It was.
I see the county is also helping with this as well?
Yes.
6K, have they historically helped out as well in your?
This is the first year we've asked.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you need to, Debbie, recently?
I know, Debbie. She said it.
So this benefits the Rotary Club, okay?
It does. And all the monies used do go strictly for out-of-town advertising.
Yeah.
Same thing, Statesman, Express News, Chronicle, same crowd.
Texas Co-op Power.
Same circuit, it's the.
Some, yes, there are a few additional ones.
I know you want as much as you can get the, what do you look to? What do you budget for Rotary to get from this event?
We, you mean as far as what we pay, what we, what our advertising budget is?
What the net is to the Rotary Club.
Uh, last year it was 42,000, I believe.
Forty-two grand?
Yes.
That's a lot of beer. That's a lot of beer. Sorry?
Lot of sponsors.
Lot of sponsors, okay. Congratulations, that's good for a fundraiser.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? We're gonna get that annual report. Okay? Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Fredericksburg Theater Company, and they're requesting 50,000.
I'd like to thank the council for their past support of the Fredericksburg Theater Company. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
And being the new guy here, I'll just ask, if I look at, you know, COVID recovery timeframes, you were at 30K, and I think now you're at 50K. I would assume audiences are up, there's more activity. Can you help me understand the jump from 30 to 50K over a couple of years?
We were funded 40,000, I believe, last year, so it's not a jump from 30, it's, I believe it was 40,000.
Yeah, yeah, the year prior was 30K.
Right, so, okay, so, but I can tell you that we are one of the very few theaters in the state of Texas that stayed open during COVID. That's one of the reasons why we're still in existence today. But we did see, of course, because of the mandates, the sizable decrease in our audience. But our reason for the, I guess you would say, the extra $10,000 requested is, as mentioned in the reporting, that we show that we're good stewards of the money. 63% of our audience comes from outside Gillespie County, which is unheard of for a community theater. Most community theaters, according to National Endowment of the Arts, should expect an audience of about a tenth of their population. That's for the whole season or for the whole year, and most of that being local. So in other words, we at the Fredericksburg Theater Company should only expect an audience of 1,100 for the entire year. We're getting ready to open Annie Get Your Gun. Last summer, we did Mary Poppins. We did 10 performances of Mary Poppins. Each one was sold out. So that tells you we have busloads of people coming from retirement communities such as Sun City, travel groups from Corpus Christi, coming here to wine, dine, and see a show.
Yeah, I saw Pretty Rotten Scales, it was amazing.
Thank you.
Super impressed. Oh, I didn't, how do you track out-of-town versus in-town? I didn't see.
We have, well, because of the nature of our business, most of our transactions happen online. All of them do. So, right, it asks for, we ask for credit card, obviously we have to complete the transaction, zip codes are asked. So we do have reporting, I have reporting that whether it's following an event or following the season, it shows me, I can break it down by state, I can break it down by county, I can break it down by city, as to where, you know, people are coming from, the counts.
Steve, where do your TV dollars go? That's neat, TV dollars. On your post-report of last year, $7,400 for TV.
Seventy-four hundred?
That's what I have.
Correct. Yeah, we do two, we do two with K.I., and one of them is always with, and we do that in conjunction with the other nonprofits in town, especially like the Knights and the Chamber of Commerce. So we do the winter parade. And then in that, in that showing, we present the remainder of the season, which usually is about four, four shows or events, they have remaining for that season. We always do one in the summer, usually following right after our summer production, but it happens right before our summer finale. Our summer finale this year is going to be Ring of Fire, the Johnny Cash Show, so I'm assuming, and maybe what somebody here would know, but usually they approach us about this time of year to do a summer, and we, what we do is we do an early TV presentation to promote the first part of the season.
That's K.I.?
K.I.
Yeah, they reached out to me when I was at the museum, very aggressive, yeah.
Yeah. Angela's a good salesperson.
Do you have any idea what the percentage of your newspaper buy is not the standard?
I can find that figure for you, but I, a lot of our buy in terms of advertising is done through social media now, so.
I'm looking at your number here that you got on your post-report. You've got 8,000 for newspaper.
And I, well, knowing that we spent 83,000 on marketing, I'm sorry, 63,000 on marketing last year, so, yeah, that's, a lot of our advertising now, because of the nature of business today, we do a lot through Facebook, we do a lot through Instagram, we have a YouTube channel, we create videos and trailers for all our shows, we buy ad space and all those social media platforms and send them out. The nice thing about that is we have analytics on those, so we can do like one video for one event, one show, and I know it has like 40, 50,000 views.
One thing just to flag, as we think about the Fredericksburg Standard, I'm curious what their readership is, because there could be some out-of-town folks there. So just to, when we see that someone advertising the standard doesn't necessarily mean that's against the rules, because there could be a number of those.
I'm not suggesting it's against the rules or that it's inappropriate, but I would like to know. Percentage.
I can get that number for you, so, and I can be glad to email it to you. But we do buy ad space in San Antonio Express, mainly in the Daily Times, and then we buy Fredericksburg Standard.
Is it defined what art is in statute? I mean, music, paintings, culinary arts, theater, is it specifically defined, or it just says for the encouragement promotion?
It's not a term that's defined in the statute.
No.
And the opinions that I've seen on it really have only dealt with the traditional arts, fine arts, and so, and not crafts. Anything else for Steve?
If I can, I mean, the definition of art by Aristotle is imitation of life, so that would mean music is imitating the song of a bird, a theatrical presentation is imitating the realities of life on stage, a painting is imitating the visual beauty that surrounds us. So, it's kind of hard to define, but that's how I've always understood it, if I may be, put that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some answers for the Nimitz. If, I didn't know.
Go ahead.
If, in terms of the questions, the first one that was presented by Mr. Riley was, yes, it is a Tier Two historic site, Command Post is, and it was submitted and communicated with the Historic Commission, and they spoke several times, and the bid request is in line with Historic Guidelines for Window Paints associated with this level. So, and then the second question was about the grant for $140,000. What percentage does that make of the full budget? And these numbers are coming to me from Stephen Lutz, who is the Director of Development from the Nimitz, who just actually resigned. The $140,000 is all out of area advertising, and the full operating budget is over 4.5 million. So the, and that's on digital advertising in Texas Magazine, some road signage, digital social media, and website geo-fencing. The full marketing budget, though, is $250,000. I didn't figure out the percentages, maybe I should have, but I was frantically texting so I could get those answers for you. So.
Thank you for that.
Anything else? Thank you for your time, and once again, we want to thank you for your past support.
Next up is Fredericksburg, our friends of Gillespie County Country Schools, and they're asking for $45,685.
Now, I've got to hear they're asking for 91.37.
92.
I'm sorry. I added them together.
Oh, okay, so it should be 45,685.
Yes, sir.
Would you take 91 if we decided?
Sure.
All right, this is for preservation projects on these country schools?
And advertising, that's correct.
And advertising, okay. I see, yeah. 45 for Rhine Gold School? Oh, 45 Pope, Rhine Gold School, 35, 3, and advertising 10, 3, okay. I got it. We've got detailed bids.
You got 20,800 from the county, so is that, was that a separate ask, or was that for the same?
No, no, that's a separate project. That's different.
How many schools y'all keep up?
We have 12 schools. There are 12 sites. There are 36 or 38 facilities on these sites. There are 12 schools. All the school buildings are over 100 years old and represent a small portion of all the schools that were in the county. There are 44 country schools in our county, which is kind of amazing.
And these numbers, and you may put it in your narrative, these numbers, Jim, on the start with volunteer hours and so forth, usage totals, 64 pictures, is that from your sign-ins at each one?
Right, yeah. Each of the schools has a facility that allows the visitors to sign in and give us information.
Yeah.
So these are self-reported kinds of numbers. Obviously, they're not precise. There's as precise as we can get them.
Sure.
But, yes, we are, and it's amazing how many people come and visit the schools and look at them. A lot of people are interested in the historic buildings, and this whole group of schools is, we have the largest single group of country schools in America in Gillespie County.
I know it's a challenge to capture this data, but it sure helps us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a ton of, a ton of zip codes.
Jim, I see that bit from Crown Rotary was back in October. I assume that's gone up too?
I'm sure it has.
Is there?
We, we are.
We have pound dollar, is that, is that the 35 or?
35.
I didn't see it on them.
Oh, here it is, sorry, yeah. And included in the package should have been the pictures that show all the, you know, the rotten spots that have to be repaired. With buildings of this age, there's constant repair that has to be done, and because it's a historic structure, it has to be done in a precise way, and so that's part of the reason it costs so much.
Okay. Other questions?
We certainly appreciate the council's past support. This is a unique group of country schools that are visited by lots of people, and interestingly enough, we, there is an exhibit now in Smithsonian about our country schools, so it's, it's wide coverage. Any other questions I can answer, be happy to do it. And if there's anyone that'd like to go visit them, I'd be glad to give you a tour, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the German Choirs of Fredericksburg, and they're asking for 1,500.
I'm Jim Frainer, representing the choirs. We are all about promoting and preserving the German culture here in town, and we usually do two main concerts each year, one in the fall, one in the spring, and we're asking for $1,500, which is a little bit less than what we asked for and received a year ago. Next year, we'll have a bigger ask. We will be sponsoring and hosting the Zanger Fest, which is a big festival, song festival, sing festival. It's been going on for years. By the way, the Arien Monocor has been around since 1908, which is a 115-year organization. That's one of the, that's the men's choir out of the German, German choirs of Fredericksburg. The bulk of our funds would go towards advertising as well as rental of facilities. Our members, we do not charge much in the way of dues, so we're basically donation-grant dependent.
So, where do you do this? What facility?
We have in the past used St. Mary's.
St. Mary's.
How long are your events? I'd love, I'd love to go, but I don't think my kids could last.
They're not that long. I would say, you know, we have a, I'd say hour and 15, 20 minutes usually. We have a little, completely kite, which is a fellowship time, and everybody has food and refreshments, and that's usually before, and then we have the concert, and we have a little intermission in between. We also perform at Oktoberfest, and we've done the, several concerts for nursing facilities around town. The Vender Stuken concert, we've performed there in the past, too.
Mick, this head comes up sometimes. It used to come up frequently. In, is artist fees, I heard you say that that was included or accepted. What about staff allocations? Is that the same thing?
Seems to be a little bit different, some of the language on the art portion of the statute. I think it's pretty broad when you're talking about art, performance, I'll find art to promote and display it. So if it's actually a direct part providing that, I think it can be covered, and that could theoretically include military fees.
That's our director and our pianist.
I understand. I do.
We have to tell you that. We have to tell you that.
And there. Any other questions for James? Thank you. Thank you for your pass support.
Next up is Gillespie County Fair and Festival Association, and they're asking for 65,000.
Hi, are you Kendall?
No, I'm not Kendall, unfortunately. I'm Sandra. Kendall is the Director of Gillespie County Fairgrounds. And I want to start with my first year, so I don't know very much about this situation.
So you, they just sort of threw you to it?
Yes, sir.
I understand. So you, this is a pretty typical request in my experience of project support for the fair, specifically the horse race, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Just curious why there wasn't a request made to the county on this one, because they have supported in the past.
We were in between. I got hired in January and the other lady leaving, and we missed the deadline after we worked.
I have a follow-up to that, that in 2021, they were at 30K, dropped to 18,750. If you have to just take, go to find out why, but I'm like, on paper, it looks like their support was kind of falling.
I'll have to check. I'm not sure why it dropped.
And they did not, did you say they didn't award anything this year?
They, they forgot to apply.
Okay.
So it wasn't?
I have, I'm hard of hearing, and Ms. Kirshen's very soft voiced. Sometimes I miss, and I'm sure I miss some important stuff. All right. Any other questions? All right, well, I think you're done.
Thank you.
Next up is Gillespie County Historical Society, and they're asking for 200,000. And this picture that is on your bias is part of their package.
Good evening. I am Monty Marshall, the brand-new Executive Director for the Gillespie County Historical Society, coming up on one month in this new job. And I'm here tonight to ask your consideration for our request for a significant amount of money, $200,000, to help us complete a project that was begun last year with $100,000 in hot funds through our distribution. Just to refresh your memories, our intent in restoring the Yensky Sunday House on the corner of Milam and San Antonio Street is to bring the exterior of the building to a near original state so that it can be incorporated into our interpretation plan at the museum as an example of a 20th-century Sunday house. In terms of the interior of the building, our plan is to use the second floor to develop a studio to support our distance learning program that takes the story of Fredericksburg and Gillespie County beyond the boundaries of our community and into classrooms all across our state and even into the nation. Believe it or not, we're not only using that mechanism to educate about Fredericksburg and Gillespie County's history, but also by giving a distance experience, we're trying to encourage students and teachers and their families to come and visit Fredericksburg and our county for a firsthand experience of what this community offers. And our Education Director informed me this afternoon that we have actually had, as a result of a class participating in that distance learning program, a school class from Florida that came to visit the Pioneer Museum for that firsthand experience. Down on the bottom floor of the Yensky House, we want to maintain flexibility, but we want to use that space in whatever way is going to maximize our capacity to draw more people to the museum. And we're envisioning that being either a Center for Educational Programming and other programming that takes place at the Pioneer Museum, to be a welcoming place for tour groups that come to the museum. Because right now, when tour groups arrive, they have to come through the gift shop, which are pretty confined quarters. The other option for that downstairs area is to use as interpretive space for exhibits, either on a more permanent basis or in a rotating basis. But again, the main thrust is to use the space in a way that's going to maximize our ability to attract more people to the, to the Pioneer Museum. We've provided a formula that has been used a couple of years now to show the, the impact that we're having in terms of putting heads in beds. Last year, generating approximately $130,000 plus in out-of-county and out-of-state visitor spending. And I also want to highlight an important point. And i- if you'll take a good look at that picture that's been included in your packet, at the present moment, in its current state, the Yensky House is a liability to the visitor experience in Fredericksburg. That's as far as the Historical Society was able to go with the $100,000 that was given to us last year. One of the unknowns that I've been told about was they encountered significant issues with asbestos in the house plus lead. And those abatement efforts totaled, I believe, in the neighborhood of $60,000 out of the $100,000 that was allocated last year. So, given the fact that it is a liability to the visitor experience in its current state, the funds we're requesting from the city will help us complete the project and turn a liability into an asset. Third thing, we are spending the money that you provide us locally. So we're infusing it back into the local economy. We're using a local contractor, who in turn uses local suppliers, and therefore supporting our local economy through the funds that you give us. As near as I can calculate, we meet both the tests. We, we do contribute positively to putting heads in beds, and we are clearly in the business of historic restoration and preservation. And I do want to thank you all, not just for the funds you have provided to the specific ask in the past from the Historical Society, but also just in general for your support of historic preservation and cultural heritage tourism in Fredericksburg. We, we have prospered through the years in no small measure due to the support that folks like all of you have provided to the Historical Society and the Pioneer Museum, and we are grateful.
Couple of quick questions. Have we remediated all the issues with lead-based paint and any other hazardous material, asbestos and so forth? That's all?
That's my understanding.
Right. 200K, it is a big number.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we understand if that is going to complete the project? And if so, what is the timeline? Have we worked the timeline?
It, it is our intention to complete this project in the next year.
Monty, what's, what's going to happen with that building in between there? The old credit union building or whatever?
Well, it actually, currently, it's being used for storage.
Right, I, I know.
And I don't think, at least to my knowledge, we don't have any plans to do anything with that building at present.
The city, cities, probably, one.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the total of the project? What's the total fix of this building? How many thousands of dollars?
What is the total cost of the entire project both years? Well, it must be $500,000, our ask. I don't know that for a fact. I'm just going on the, on the basis of a $300,000 ask for last year and a $200,000 ask for this year.
The $300,000 ask for last year was not granted. I thought it was only $100,000 that was given.
That's correct.
So I thought it's closer to $300,000 total.
Yeah, so I was going to ask you, are you, are y'all asking for hot money to do the whole project?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Have you had any kind of fundraising attempt for this project?
Not that I'm aware of, although there are funding sources we might be able to tap if we don't get all of the funds or to complete the project if it goes over.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just asking if you have, i- is there another potential funder for this project other than hot?
I don't know this from my own personal.
That's okay, I won't hold you to it.
But the, yes.
There is. There's, there's other, you're, you're looking to raise?
There is, there is a funder who has indicated, let me know what you need to finish the project after we go through this round with the hot request.
And you think the whole thing's going to be, and I'm talking about, I know that interior is a different animal. But we're talking about the preservation of the, the building itself. Because I know there were some historic materials in it, and because I talked to Richard when I was still there.
Right.
And there's some original paneling and beadboard and some cool stuff up there. Is it Richard's view, and you don't have to represent him, except in my question, and I'll take the guess, is Richard saying that the whole project will be $500,000? Yeah, Jim?
I think it's the original request of 300 based on Richard's desk. And that would cover the outside completely if we get the 200 that we're asking for this year. And I don't know if that will have to be over, out of that, start on the interior. But the interior is where we think we can get some additional help.
Okay, so you're looking for hot money to do the entire outside project?
Correct.
Okay. And a couple of, in the narrative here, Monty, it says that on the ground of the Pioneer, an excellent example of a Sunday house. Are you talking about the Yensky House? Because that's not a Sunday house.
That's what I've been informed, that it is a Sunday house. It's a 20th-century example of a Sunday house.
No.
Well, Mrs. Yensky's here, she can tell us.
What's the word?
Hey, Joe.
Where originally, originally, am I speaking on or off the chair?
Thank you. Excellent, Joe.
Originally, it was the Stau. And then we come in, of course, with Sunday house. On week on Saturday, you need to go to church the next day and be done. But it was Stau House. Mr. Wissens Stau gave it to their sensei, this sensei. He always had to the period of his staff, and he wanted the interior staff. And then they gave it to my husband's care back in 1938. My husband's aunt Eleanor, who was kind of a married, presented. And in the day of the Sabbath, he gave a name rather than wrong. While this is not Stau's house, it's the house. Because it's so furious, and people refer to this house as the Yensky House. That is kind of, that is not Stau's house.
I can imagine. It was, it was built as a Sunday house.
It was a Sunday house.
It was originally a Sunday house.
Thank you. Now I have learned, Monty, you have.
Haven't we all?
You have correct information, and I got bad information. Because when I was there, we were, we were thinking that it was not historic. That it was built in 1910, and it had a bunch of additions to it and so forth. Okay, so it is a representative of the Sunday house. So you're looking to do what the Nimitz has done upstairs in their education?
Yes.
Is the online stuff? Okay.
Yep. Our staff has been down and very much impressed with what the Nimitz has achieved.
Okay.
So it's kind of a longer road to get to heads in beds if you're doing distance, right? But you mentioned the Florida route that's coming here. So that will, I guess, still help promote us and promote our community?
Yes.
And eventually, after people see it online, be able to come here?
I think so. And plus, one of the things that was interesting in the conversation with our Education Director, we can actually shoot video all around town, all around the county, and embed that in, on the green screen that's taken into the school rooms. And so they get to actually see what Fredericksburg has to offer.
The county didn't contribute anything. Was that a miss they have the past two years? So just curious why they weren't asked, the county, for any hot funds?
As I understand it, the county ask that, from the Historical Society, have been for a different project, different projects, plural.
Well, there's nothing this year. Did they turn you down?
No, we didn't get, I can't remember, was it 1,500?
You were between EDs, right?
25,000 for programs and 7,000 for science.
From the county? So you got 32 from the county. Great. That didn't make our paper, so.
Thank you.
That's okay. That's a lot of fields to fill in. Any other questions for Monty? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Next up is the Hill Country Film Society.
Anybody here with a film festival? All right, we'll move on.
Mom's Center. It's Mom's Center DBA, part of the Hills Resort. I mean, I'm sorry, resource. And they're asking for 3,000.
Turkey Drive is the Mom's Center. Is anybody here with them? Okay.
Their town is a sporting event. That's what they applied for. Just to flag that.
All right, moving on.
Oktoberfest UC88, that's Debbie, and they're requesting 2,000.
Good evening again, and just to answer a question from before, I did look at my post reports, and I did detail the advertising expenditures from 2022. Some are the same for 2023.
Thank you. Shelley, can we get the report on this one as well, please?
Yes.
And you had a box checked here for encouragement and promotion of the arts?
We do so much for the arts through our gifts that we give to the community, and we invite local artists at no charge to exhibit at Oktoberfest to sell their work. Oktoberfest was founded, Perdona's Creative Arts Mines was founded by a group of artisans in the late '70s. So their wish and their goal was to have the arts live on, and we have honored that to this day.
I'm not seeing on the application a breakdown of what the money is used for.
The, the $10,000? Okay, that's in, in.
In last year's report?
Yes.
That's in a document we don't have yet. I mean, I know you gave it, but the assumption is we don't.
So the, and also the assumption is it's going to be the same as what last year's breakdown was for that $10,000?
I can also give you where we plan to spend our monies for 2023. Update that. Okay, I'll update that and send that.
Okay, thank you.
My post had 2022.
Just a question on the, on the scholarships. How many scholarships are granted?
We have about 16 scholarships we're given, giving right now. And upper grads get $2,500 per semester, and the undergrads get $1,500 per semester. And they have to study the arts and keep their grades up.
Any other questions? Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Next is Stonewall Chamber of Commerce, and they're requesting 15,000.
Are you Denise?
I'm Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank y'all for finding us. Denise was not able to come this evening, so you're getting two and hopefully we can muddle through this a little bit, so I apologize.
Appreciate you being here. You don't need to apologize. 15,000, um, and it's, this is y'all's first time to ask?
Yes, sir.
For HAWT?
I believe so.
And you got 20 from the county, did that? What's the, um, do we have it? The, the total event cost? Can you guess?
Around 265, 265, that's.
265? Holy, oh.
Have y'all ever asked for hot funds before? If all been, not in the state?
Not from the state, just the county.
Okay. Sorry, you don't have that information.
Um, I spoke to Denise earlier today just to call and try to understand a little bit better. And you, uh, in the application, it calls for construction maintenance operation. And I know that you all have done some work already, um, construction of the retaining wall, which is now completed, I understand.
Yes, sir.
And also wheelchair ADA accessibility, which is also been completed. Is that?
Yes, sir.
That's one project. So those are, that's not a part of the request today, is that, is that correct?
We're looking to replenish the funds that we use for that.
What funds do you use? Just something out of general reserve or?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you please keep throwing candy at the brave? We are the only ones. I am. Please, thank you. Not for me.
And then I did notice there was another typo in there. It is a free, three night event. We do have a rodeo. It's, it's called Slack. On Thursday night, we do have a small band for whoever's around who wants to participate.
And it is free at the.
Correct. And our bigger is set Friday and Saturday.
Anything else?
Just again, looking at the county and somebody brought this up already, 20K, um, prior years, have you requested to anything from the county?
Yes.
There's nothing showing here, so maybe we missed that as well, or did they provide funding? I, I know they've received the last five years because I've been the commissioner for a long, so I can answer that part. Uh, I'm really not sure. Okay, but there has been some funding. Correct. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Well, I'm ready.
Next is Texas Center for Wine and Culinary Arts DBA, Flavory Texas.
I know that guy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I have decided next year, Kelly, I'd like to be listed as Flavory Texas. Could we be number seven instead of whatever number I know? But anyway, we are Texas Center for Wine and Culinary Arts is our corporate name. We have a DBA, Flavory Texas after doing rebranding. Uh, just as a little background, we did receive occupancy tax funding maybe six or seven years ago when we were doing a food truck festival at Lukembach, Texas. Uh, since we, uh, changed to the holiday prelude, uh, don't believe we've had any occupancy funding, uh, since then. So this is our, the reason there's no, um, showing of any funding. It was way back when we did receive some occupancy tax funding. So basically, uh, we are asking, um, for marketing and advertising promotions. Uh, we, um, basically last year did, our marketing budget last year, what we spent on advertising was 75,000. I mean, excuse me, $75. So we're hoping to increase that, uh, budget this year with, uh, um, the occupancy tax request. But what kind of questions may I answer for you with that little bit of background?
What's the cost of a ticket to the event?
$95 a person is the cost of the ticket. And just, I can give you just real quickly, cause I know you've asked for other folks. Um, the total income for the event is, or in 2022 was 32,000. Our expenses were about 12,000 and the net was about 20,000 for the event, just as background. And obviously, like everyone else, we're trying to increase the net, uh, for the event this year. And our event is November 14th. And one of the, I think, good things about our particular event in terms of, uh, promotion for Fredericksburg is that it is a Tuesday night always, which is an opportunity for people to come to Fredericksburg, uh, middle of the week and, uh, uh, generate some occupancy tax during the middle of the week, as opposed to a lot of events that are on the weekends.
What was it, what was that dating in, I'm sorry?
Uh, Tuesday, November 14th.
So 200 is continuing to be a sellout for you?
Um, we hope to sell a few more tickets, uh, this coming year. We based the 200 maximum on the weather that particular evening. Um, it says Swallows Eve, so if it looks like the weather's, weather's gonna be, uh, good, we can use the outdoor patio, which we could increase probably about 50 or 75 people if, uh, we stopped the tickets online when we realized we were gonna have very cold weather that night. So that's where we stopped at 200, which is about the maximum. We might be able to get a few more in the Swallows Eve based on, uh, using smaller tables for the tastings and what have you.
You, you sound like you've done some of this kind of stuff before.
Um, once or twice, or 10 or 15 or 150, I don't know.
I can tell you, this has been a very nice event in the past, so thank you for doing it.
Yeah, we, uh, part of the Flavory Texas project, as you all know, it's much bigger than this. But, uh, um, this is one of the events that we use to, uh, generate some operational funds. Uh, just so you know, we'll be going through a, um, a planning session and then we'll be doing a feasibility study for our capital campaign, which we hope to launch in the spring of 2024. So that's kind of when we'll be, we'll be looking for much larger numbers of money at that point. Not necessarily from occupancy tax, but in general.
Anything else? Thank you, Ernie.
Uh, thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, nice seeing all of you guys again. I think this is probably my first city council meeting since, but I'll come back. Thank you.
You've missed, you've missed a lot.
Next is Texas Hill Country Higher Education Development Foundation, DBA, Hill Country University Center. And they are requesting 10,000.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, thank you. I am Tom Hutton. And I chair the board Hill Country University Center. And this Forging Futures Golf Classic is our major fundraiser. Uh, we receive no public funding as opposed to the other eight Texas Tech regional sites that do have funding. And their, their facilities and their grounds are covered, whereas we have to pay our own. Our overall budget is about $400,000 a year.
And I see you've annotated your marketing plan partnering with CBS, uh, commercials and placing pay ads in golf magazines.
Yes, yes, this was new this year. We went from two to three days, which brings more people in, more heads and beds. And we have worked with CBS Austin that ran a number of commercials. In addition, geofencing, which we found to be very useful, uh, around principally private golf courses because this is a high dollar event. And so that was, uh, proved to be successful. We increased our out of town golfers by about 50% this year. They were the majority by far of the golfers. But the three day event, there's also several other activities besides the golf.
That does take place at Boot Ranch?
Yes, yes, the golf is Boot Ranch. Uh, many of the activities there are at Boot Ranch, but some are other places such as La Gon V.
Do they help with some capacity with costs there as well, or, or is it?
They've been very good to us in terms of not charging for the golf expenses. We pay for all the food, the beverage.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the next one is Frontier History Company Foundation.
Right, good. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Marvin. How are you, sir?
I'm fine, thanks.
All the rest of you, good evening. Well, this is a brand new foundation. We actually just finished a full year. But just as a background, I think some of y'all may or may not know, I've been around here a few years. I spent 27 years at the Nimitz Museum creating education programming. And they, they've gone different ways with it and we, we kind of still have fun with that. But what we're doing differently, and actually we're working with Maya Marshall now, we just finished, you know, he made me camp out seven days over there.
Yeah, I heard you.
Yeah, I just like, nevermind, just kidding. And also we're working with the local theater company. We're providing a lot of the stuff that we do for that. But our goal with what our foundation does is education by getting kids and families, whatever, to understand the history. You know, Fredericksburg has probably some of the most unique history in the country. When you think about everything that came through here. And of course, the last five years, I was the manager out here at Fort Martin Scott. And a real quick note on that is that is the oldest US military post in Texas. A lot of people don't know that. That is a historic site. And hopefully we're trying to get that back in play. Uh, but along with Pioneer Museum, what we do, and I was listening to folks talking about these schools. You know, all of this is our history. And then when we talk about, you know, these other organizations that are all, we're all keyed together. And that's kind of what we do. So when we show up, we're allowed to be dressed in any kind of format, shape or form, but it's all of history. And in fact, this weekend, we'll be up at Lano doing their Fiesta Day, whatever we do. But it's, it's going out and doing that, it's bringing people back into this town. If we were in Alamo here a couple of months ago, and I was surprised how many said, well, we've heard of Fredericksburg, what's that like? So it's like, well, let me tell you. You know, we're supposed to be talking about the Alamo, but we're talking about Fredericksburg and going, well, we gotta go see that. So that's kind of what we're doing with our foundation. Uh, and we're just getting started and really trying to help figure out what we want to do with it. So that's kind of where we're at. And this gentleman here, Mr. Russell Pickham, is the genius behind all the paperwork. I have no idea what all this is. This is not, I make paper airplanes, you know, he's the genius behind this. If you got questions, don't ask me about that, ask him. Okay?
So you did the application?
I filled it, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I did.
Um, Marvin, thank you. I've, I've worked with you before and I know the work you do. Amen to your speech about history.
Mm-hmm.
Frontier portion of our history that in my view is undersold, underrepresented.
Yeah.
And, uh, Emily and I have talked about Fort Martin Scott, that's on our radar. So, and Eric Hamerson has worked, has done a lot of research for us to help us understand how do we solve that problem? Yeah, and I feel like you'd be a part of that. And I'm glad to see you formed a, a formation, a foundation.
Yes, sir.
That's cool. I know when you're doing nonprofit work, you're busy doing the work, fulfilling the mission, living your passion. And it's hard sometimes to sit down and focus on numbers and all that kind of stuff. And you've asked for a specific, a kind of a specific number.
Right.
Three. Can you tell me how you got to that?
Sure. That was, and we do events other places besides Fredericksburg. But over the past 12 months of just how long we've been in the formation, that is the actual cost to us just for the events that we did in Fredericksburg in the last 12 months.
Got it. Would you be able to provide some sort of a document that shows your income, expense, revenue, the revenue expense?
Sure. I mean, just out of our Quick Book accounting system, I can do that.
I'm very appealed to by your ask and your mission, but I'd like to see that just here because you're, you're responsible.
Sure, I can do that.
And even if it's exactly what you did, you, you took last year's eight and a half. It's great. The numbers always help us.
Good.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you for hanging around.
Thank you.
Two hours and 10 minutes to do that.
Well, we're actually supposed to be able to play rehearsing at 6:30, so.
Oh.
You see how much.
Providing the guns for the play.
Yeah, we're doing all the props and the costume and.
You're giving them all the speech about pointing anybody is though.
Well, yeah, and the first thing they do, they all want to point at me. Well, not me, no, no, no. Now they're doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I, um, the city has allocated 500,000 for the unfunding of hotel occupancy tax. But with the reduction of the 45,000 from the one requester, um, these still, these totals, 7,000. I'm sorry, 798, 755. So 798,700. I'm not saying that.
Been a long day, Shelley?
Yeah.
Say it one more time. 798, 7?
755.
55.
And does that account for, um, is it the Friends of Glaston County Country Schools that was double counted? You took that out? Okay.
So that's with the corrected number for, uh, county schools and the elimination of the for-profit?
Yes.
Okay.
And then a note, the, um, Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, that was, the ask was for 110 for one of the items and then 27,000 for landscaping. Just, uh, it wasn't like a formal 110, just. Does that make sense?
So Shelley, you had to go back.
The total amount requested was 137,000 if you total landscaping and the church and project.
They received 45,000 against the 110 ask.
So that's not what they're asking.
Yeah.
So really it's 92,000 if you take out the county.
Well, I think your, the asks, they're gone now, but I think your ask was any portion of that balance, so I didn't hear a hard number.
Okay, uh, so just stating the obvious for the audience, but also for the, um, for me, the council. We don't have to allocate 500,000, even though it's in the budget. Or we can, I've, it's happened before, gone over a little in some cases, up from what we budgeted because we don't know what the asks are gonna be when we have the budget. And if there's been an especially great year, there've been times that we have, we have allocated a little more than the 500,000. Or, yeah, or whatever the budget. So we have some leeway there. Um, but I do have the notation about the, uh, limitations on historical preservation and the limitation on the arts. That's, that's, that's a statute. Okay. Thanks, man, for educating me. That's, I love it.
I have a couple more questions about that.
Sure.
May, so of the entire hot revenue collected, we sent five sevenths of it to the Convention of Israel Hero. And we work in the two-sevenths realm, right? So we have allocated 500,000 of that two-sevenths amount. And Christo, what is the amount that we have received of the two-sevenths? Um, has everything been allocated?
What we received, two-sevenths? We've received. So we just have, we take the budget throughout the whole year, you know, five, so it has an offset.
Okay, so we do that based on last year, then?
We just, we do it based on the budget amount.
How are we, how are we tracking so far?
Um, we're tracking.
About what we thought we'd get. Um, and my other question is whenever we're looking at that two-sevenths, you have 15% is for historic, 15% for arts, is there a way we could get? Is it appropriate to get what we have of the two-sevenths already spent on historic and arts? Because that needs to factor into this amount.
What was the 1.6 number you quoted last time we were at the workshop? 1.6 million? Do you not remember that from HAWT?
It was, it could have been, we started our HAWT and do it, five seconds off.
So 1.6 is here we go.
That's what we have left, that was the five seconds.
Right. Oh, we have 1.67 in HAWT, so.
And we've spent, sorry, Christo, you sent me this.
What do we get, Brady? Six, seven, that million?
Yeah, CBD is saving up for what is a plan.
Okay. I know I can figure out what 1.6 is two seven seven, but, no, maybe I could.
Just count, I'll do it.
And then why?
She's done numbers first.
What is our, what is our fund balance?
I have to. I know that we dipped into our accounts.
How about fund balance in the HAWT collection account?
Fund balance is, it's yours.
Yes, it is.
Yours and fund balance. Can you give this to us? No, I mean. Offline, or offline. I'm not a finance director, but the answer is 5.6 million. I'm not a finance director, but the answer is five-point-six million.
Is that it?
Two-seven, so five-point-six is. And six.
So the question I have, I know last year we took some monies and used it on art pots instead of the hot funds. Is that completely different to the other people? That come from something else?
It all comes from the same place.
Well, I know, but it's not part, this half a million, right?
We have, we have just over a million dollars to account for.
So we've used it for personnel, which is all related to STR management, right? And then the pavers at Mark Potts and other improvements at Mark Potts and Christmas lights at Mark Potts.
How does that five-hundred K track for year-over-year? Up, down, flat?
Pretty much fifty-five thousand.
Here's what I've been doing a lot, Randy.
Just a number.
Yeah, I remember four twenty, four eighty, that was our usual year. So we just made it flat.
Have a good one.
Yeah. Anything else, anybody?
One other thing, Mayor, I'm, I'm coming up with a number that's a little bit different. When I adjust the ninety-one down to forty-five, six-eighty-five, and take out the forty-five thousand, I'm at seven fifty-three, four forty is our, our total request. And we'll, we'll get all this information together along with some inspection that was submitted a little bit late.
So what is the question that we come down and start making that decision?
At the next meeting. That's correct.
Is somebody coming in with a chart?
We'll clean up all this information, we'll provide a little bit of additional information that's not included. And a decision, a final decision for funding will be made on, on the sixth. And, and while we're doing that, we can be doing the calculation for the fifteen percent and fifty percent. So we're tracking that as we're making those decisions. We might have to make a few adjustments at the end, but we'll make that real clear.
Last year, Laura had a spreadsheet, and so as we said, you know, you'd asked for ten, we said five, and it was all calculated, so we could see it.
Right, we did say. So make appropriately when we deliberate this at our next meeting. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking what we would do would, we each come with our recommend, recommended number for each ask and negotiate, and then pass the whole thing at once. Is that preferable?
Well, you could do it separately, but that would probably be preferable, so you know your totals as you go.
Yeah. So everybody be prepared to come with your list, and we can negotiate in, in real time and then come up with a total number at the end. Good?
As we do that, are we going to stick to the five-hundred number? That's, are we going to?
I don't know. When I sit down, I may, I don't know.
Can I say one more thing? I forgot to remind y'all that everything in that packet is confidential, because it has some different-
Thank you for that. If we, if we decide to go over five hundred, does that require an amendment? Does that require a question? Okay. So it's a matter of quantity? All right. Anything else? There being no further business in this meeting, we are adjourned.